Okay, welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Township of Howell Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, June 5th, 2025. Eileen, opening statement?
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 3rd, 2025, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Second, on January 3rd, 2025, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Third, on January 3rd, 2025, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Beto.
Here.
Mr. Greenfield.
Here.
Mr. Carbonic.
Here.
Mr. Mercer.
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse.
Here.
Mr. Rubel is running late. Councilman Adele.
Here.
Mayor Leggio.
Here.
Mr. McNicholas.
Here.
Mr. Friedman.
Here.
And Chairman Husser is excused tonight. You have a quorum.
Councilman, you have oaths? Or you did it already?
They're already done, sir.
Already done, okay. Good to go. All right. So let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, remain standing, and have a moment of silence for our men and women in the military here and abroad.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. First, we order business as approval of minutes from April 24, 2025, eligible voters. Mr. Carbonic, myself, Mr. Leggio, and Mr. Beto. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes from April 24, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Leggio, Mayor, Mr. Carbonic. Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
And Mayor Leggio.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Correspondence?
We have two ordinances to review tonight. Ordinance O-25-25 first.
Hello?
And an ordinance amending Chapter 188. Go ahead.
So, the amendment ordinance is just adding in the definition of emergency services, which defines them as uses of property related to municipal fire district counties or state owned and operated emergency vehicles, including fire departments, police stations, and emergency medical service facilities, and these are all compliant and consistent with the master plan.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve ordinance 0?
What was the genesis for having to make those? What's the background story and why it was important to define that?
It's a secondary means for emergency services?
Hi. You don't usually see me. My name's Matt Howard. I'm the Director of Community Development and Land Use Officer. The purpose of the ordinance and the one that follows this, we have certain uses in town, primarily our firehouses, that are not permitted uses. So they're not listed in the code. I don't think there was ever an intention that they wouldn't be considered a permitted use, but as those sites are looking to do improvements, things as simple as an emergency generator, technically not a permitted use, needs to use variance relief. I try to make it more streamlined.
Understood. Okay. Thanks for clarification. But not have explained it better. So, thank God he was here.
Does anyone ask the question?
Thank you. All right. Do you have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 0-25-25.
Motion by Mr. Tannenhouse. Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Greenfield.
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield.
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse.
Yes.
Councilman Adele.
Yes.
Mayor Leggio.
Yes.
Mr. McNicholas.
Yes.
And Mr. Friedman. Thank you.
Okay. Second ordinance, 0-25-26.
And as Mr. Howard just said, this just permits the emergency uses as a permitted use in a few zones, and like, we decided just, you know, avoids the whole use permit.
It's just a continuation of the others for these particular zonings areas.
Okay. So I had two ordinances, okay.
Matt, you've got anything you want to add to it?
No, exactly what I had said before. Some towns, you know, your firehouses might be township property, and it might not be something that comes up in your zoning ordinance. That's not the case here. They're not township entities. It's their own taxing entity.
Volunteer.
So we just want to make our zoning make sense, and there's no reason they should come for use variances.
Thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Also, Brian, they discussed this with the council.
Okay.
We talked about this, and why we're getting the...
Well, it makes sense.
Yeah.
I don't think people realize that our...
Those are good questions, right?
I don't think that people realize that our fire districts are not town property.
Right.
It's not town. They're independent.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Mayor Leggio, and second was Councilman Adele.
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield.
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse.
Yes.
Councilman Adele.
Yes.
Mayor Leggio.
Yes.
Mr. McNicholas.
Yes.
And Mr. Friedman.
And we have two resolutions here. First one is case number SD-3020, John and Kathleen Martin. Resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters, Mr. Carbonic, Mr. Rubel, Councilman Adele, Mayor Leggio, and Mr. Beto. We just have to vote on those.
Motion.
Okay. Mayor Leggio?
Second.
Mr. Rubel.
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic.
Yes.
Mr. Rubel.
Yes.
Councilman Adele.
Yes.
Mayor Leggio.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Case number SP-1099, Mama Solar 1 LLC. Resolution granting extension of time. Eligible voters, Mr. Carbonic, myself, Mr. Rubel, Mayor Leggio, Mr. Beto. Have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Carbonic. Second.
Who was second? I'm sorry?
I didn't hear one.
Second.
Mayor Leggio.
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Mr. Rubel.
Yes.
And Mayor Leggio.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Submission waivers?
No submission waivers for tonight.
Good.
Motion.
It's blank. We're going to do, first one we're going to do is the Route 33 in Fairfield Road, so it's case number SP-1142CR, Route 33 and Fairfield Road Pump Station. Capital Review Site Plan. Application of Howell Township as applicant and owner seeking approval to install an off-site pump station for sanitary sewer infrastructure on Block 168, Lot 10, Route 33.
Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the board, board professionals. Rob Simon from Harold Law on behalf of A Life Residential LLC. As outlined in the May 19, 2025, letter to the board from Jeremy Lang, Director of Development for A Life Residential, we're here to present an overview of the township's regional sanitary sewer pump station capital improvement project for Block 168, Lot 10 through 33 in Fairfield Road in the township. For your courtesy review and recommendations in conjunction with the borough master plan as set forth in the municipal land use law that provides that when a planning board shall have adopted any portion of a master plan, which certainly the Township of Howell has, that any capital project, which this is, that contemplates the expenditure of any public funds as part of the location, character, or extent of the project, is to be referred to the planning board for review and recommendation in connection and in conjunction with the master plan. It is not an application. There's, this is just what's called a courtesy review for the planning board so the planning board can understand a project that is going on or contemplated to go on within the township, within the township's borders that implicates a public project. So for over 20 years, the township has been planning for a regional pump station to be built in this location area, within the sewer service area to serve regional needs, as evidenced by various sections in the township's master plan, including the utility element and the land use plan element. The proposed location for the pump station is actually identified in the utility element of the master plan as a priority area for sewer infrastructure, while the foreman site, to which you recently granted approval for 280 residential units, including 56 affordable units, is identified in the master plan as a secondary area for sewer infrastructure, and that the proposed pump station has been designed to not only serve that project, but also to serve regional needs and will serve many properties and not just that inclusionary project on the foreman site. The proposed pump station also satisfies the expenditure of public funds requirement because the township is committed to providing funding of 20% of the costs for the pump station from its Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And further, A Life and the township recently entered into a developers agreement that contemplated the installation and operation of this pump station with A Life to assign to the township once it's completed and accepted by the township, an assignment of an easement of dedication for the sanitary sewer pump station lot, which is also, as you may recall, a condition of approval for the planning board application that we were just before you for. So, we've also provided the board under the cover letter of May 19, 2025, plans that we're going to go over tonight. I have John McKelvey from Colliers that probably should be sworn in, and then he's going to briefly do this, review the project for you.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to present to this board concerning the application now pending before it shall be nothing but the truth? For the record, sir, please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your business affiliation.
John McKelvey, MCKELVEY, Congress Engineering and Design.
And your license? I'll let your counsel qualify you.
Yeah, so, just Mr. McKelvey, briefly provide the board with your credentials and areas of expertise and licenses.
I have a New Jersey Professional Engineers License. I've attended the University of Notre Dame, have a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering, and have been in the water, waste water industry for 40-plus, if not years.
And your license is in good standing?
Yes.
And you've testified before boards in the past?
Rarely, but I have...
But you have, yes. And you're qualified on those rare occasions, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We ask that Mr. McKelvey be qualified.
Well, he's acceptable.
Okay. And Mr. McKelvey, your firm prepared the pump station plans as a subject of this capital review hearing, correct?
Correct.
And you're familiar with the property?
Correct.
Okay. And up on the board is exhibit that you're going to refer to that was previously submitted to the board, so I don't think we need to mark it.
Correct.
No, but just identify what sheet it is for the benefit of the record, please.
Sheet 2 of 18.
And what is it entitled?
I can't see.
Eileen, can you? Just entitled Off-Site Pump Station.
Off-Site Pump Station, Gravity Sewer and Force Main Permit Plans for A Life Residential Howell.
That's Sheet 2 of 18.
Correct.
So why don't you just briefly walk through for the benefit of the board what the, is intended by way of this project?
Sure. So, just for reference, on the left side of the drawing, we have the, is the A Life project. That is adjacent to Howell Road, which runs north and south on the left side of the drawing. On the top side of the drawing is Route 33 Business Section. Diagonally across the bottom is Route 33 Expressway, and then on the far upper left, you could just see Fairfield Road. As far as the off-site sewer improvements, we have a force main which is going to convey sewage off of the foreman site up Route 30, or up Howell Road to Route 33. And then on Route 33, we have two sections of gravity sewer. We have gravity sewer that flows west to east to the pump station and east to west to the pump station. The pump station is located at a low spot on Business Route 33, toward the center of that drawing. And then that pump station will convey sewage through a force main, which heads east and will connect to sewer infrastructure proposed on Fairfield Road.
Anything else you want to comment on with regard to this exhibit that's before you?
I think that's just about it. It summarizes everything.
So, Mr. Chairman, pretty simple operation. There's going to be easement, you know, once it's completed and accepted by the township in favor of the township.
And this all ties into the sanitary system that's across from the elementary school? You're just down from that elementary school?
This is going to tie into, ultimately, will tie into the rock solid realty pump station.
Oh, okay.
Which flows south on Fairfield, and that ties into Mass. One River. And one last thing, just to note that it is proposed that once these improvements are complete, they will be turned over to the township for operation maintenance.
Is the sizes of the lines that are in the street, are they meant to be so that everybody can tie into in a gravity situation, or do some of these lines not make a specific invert, and those buildings will have to pump to it?
Pump to it. Will it be low enough, I guess?
I believe most of the properties on Business Route 33 can tie in by gravity. There's gravity sewer all along there. There are some properties on Howell Road that will tie into the proposed force main. They will have to pump into that force main.
And what size is that force main going to be?
Four inch.
It's a four inch, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is anything going to be less than a four inch that you've designed?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Is four inch big enough?
Yes.
Okay. For, I guess, for pump, yeah. Force main, yeah.
Yep.
Just for the board's use, I'm here to just pretty much say everything that was just said, and I wouldn't have said it as succinct.
Sincere.
Yeah, that's it. So, there you go. The township is prepared to take ownership and maintenance of the pump station. A lot of people would be surprised to hear that we don't have large sections of Route 33 sewered. That obviously leads to problems with our development potential. There have been redevelopment studies done on Route 33. We're looking to do further redevelopment studies, and the biggest holdup on any terms of meaningful development and bringing ratables to the township on a highway corridor, which is where they belong, is our utilities. So this coming in is part of the project. It is part of the affordable housing project. We are dedicating some Affordable Housing Trust Fund monies to it, and it is a benefit to the town as a whole, as well as that corridor.
Yeah, it sounds like it. Any other questions? Got to open up the public for any testimony? Nope? Okay. Closed for the public?
Mr. Chairman, the board's obligation is to take a vote to find that the proposed improvements that have been testified to before you are substantially compliant, and I use those two words deliberately, with the community's master plan.
Okay. Do we need any other professionals input?
They've got any?
Before?
Yeah, I don't have any comments on that. We defer our review to the township engineer.
Right. So there's no landscaping damage that Sherry has to be involved with or anything like that?
So, I mean, we did write a letter, and we have a comment in there that permanent restoration obviously will have to be required on all roads, curbs, and vegetated areas. I assume that will be completed as part of the construction.
Right. Yeah. Standard, okay.
Write it into the biz specs.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that I find the application to be compliant with our community's master plan.
Second?
Mr. Beto.
That was Councilman Adele. Second.
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield.
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse.
Yes.
Mr. Rubel.
Yes.
Councilman Adele.
Yes.
Mayor Leggio.
Yes.
And Mr. McNicholas.
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a good day.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Safe right home, Rob. Take care.
Okay. Second application we're going to hear is case number SD-3017, Lizette Chalula, sorry. Minor subdivision. Application of Lizette Chalula as applicant and owner seeking approval of subject dividing the existing lot into two new lots, Lot 128.01 and Lot Number 128.02. Existing dwelling is shown to remain on proposed Lot 12.01, and a future dwelling will be
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, John Jackson, on behalf of the applicants who are here this evening with me, I have Mr. Mike Intili from Crest Engineering. This is a minor subdivision at 71 Freewood Street. About 23,000 some odd square feet. We want to make it into two lots, one roughly 9,000, the other roughly 13,000, and, 13,000. And we're eliminating the house that's non-conforming. We're taking away the sheds and buildings that are non-conforming. We can relocate the driveway. These are all in the review letters. This is really very simple. The only waiver we're asking for is going to be for the sidewalk. Ms. Beam advises that since this is a minor subdivision, we wouldn't have to pay into the fund. This is a very rural, dead-end street. You know, you could see on the illustration above, sidewalks kind of stick out like a sore thumb there, so we're asking for that waiver, and it's really that simple. 5,000 square feet is the requirement. We're dramatically over that. With your permission, if I could have Mr. Intili sworn, he'll give you the testimony?
Go ahead.
Sir, if you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to present to the board concerning this application now pending before it shall be nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, sir, please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your business affiliation.
Michael B. Intili. I am INTILE. I am with Crest Engineering Associates in Tom's River and Millstone. I'm a principal with Crest. We're located in Tom's River and Millstone, and I've been preparing subdivisions and site plans, plot plans, use variances for approximately 30 years.
Those work as well, too, just so if you want to speak into that.
Okay.
You can sit down, you can sit down and talk, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Intili, could we go to page two on the PowerPoint, which is really page one just by itself?
Do you want to go make sure your credentials?
Make sure...
Oh, you want to...
Oh, I apologize. I thought you just went there. Licensed professional engineer and planner?
Sorry.
Is your micro just? Yeah, right here. So I have my... Licensed professional engineer and planner in New Jersey since 1990.
Okay.
Mentioned principal of Crest Engineering Associates, working in Tom's River and Millstone, preparing site plans, subdivisions, variance plans, plot plans for approximately 35 years for residential, commercial, industrial projects. I've given testimony in Howell before some time ago, like five, six years ago, but in most of the, a lot of municipalities and the surrounding counties.
We accept your credentials. Thank you. Yeah, I just, I cut you off before, so I just wanted you to finish.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
For the record.
I apologize. I thought he was finished with that. Rookie mistake. With your permission, we have page two up on the screen, and Mr. Intili, can you just quickly take the board through that? This is... Yeah, so this is the aerial. Yeah, the pointer there. And our property is bounded in white here. We're .53 acres. We're located on Freewood Street on the south side. We are in the R-50 residential zone. The surrounding areas, as you can see, are pretty much the same development in the R-50 zone, residential-type developments. There's some larger lots and smaller lots, obviously. There's some open space areas as well. On the property itself, there are a couple structures. There's a, there's a single-family home, probably about 30, 40 years old, kind of dilapidated. Can we go to page four of the PowerPoint? And there it is there, on the left side. That's the primary structure. There are two sheds, lower right side of that drawing, right there. Those are kind of dilapidated. And there's another structure in the middle, which is on a concrete pad right there, and it's sort of a gazebo. It's got four columns, open sides, and a cable roof. All of those structures as part of the application tonight are going to be removed. So, we're taking every piece of structure down. Concrete will come out, the structure, the woods will come out, and so forth. There's a couple trees on the property, mostly cleared. There's a tree in the front, I think, and in the back, near the gazebo, but we'll respect those with, of course, the plot plan when we do a design for grading and so on, management for the plot plan. Other than the structures, there's the gravel driveway you see, leading to Freewood Street. There is sewer and water in the street, but the current house, because of its age, it's on septic and well. So, you've addressed all the items in the review letters. The only thing we're seeking an exception for is the requirement to put in curbs and sidewalks. Can you address that from a planning and engineering standpoint? Is that necessary? And, you know, can we do without that? Of course, we looked at the neighborhood, up and down Freewood. I was there yesterday. There is no sidewalk. There is no curb along the entire stretch of Freewood from this property all the way to the next intersection, Smith Street. It's about 500 feet. So, when you get to Smith Street, there's some return, curb returns, and there's a small piece of sidewalk there that extends down Smith Street. But other than that, from this property all the way out, there are no curb, no sidewalk. Would likely change the neighborhood look if you put a small piece of sidewalk in just for 100 feet. Additionally, if you put that in, you're going to possibly want to put curb in. If you do that, then possible widening of, what is it, 13 foot from centerline pavement. It varies in width along Freewood Street, goes as much as 30 down to 26 where we are here. But if you put curb and drain it in, then you have drainage issues potentially whenever you stop water from moving, so... Is this fairly described as a sleepy, dead-end with just a very rural character? Yes. So... I would say. So, it's not like there's a lot of pedestrians walking up and down there.
So it's not like there's a lot of pedestrians walking up and down there. There's really very little traffic, and-
Correct.
You think it's appropriate.
I do.
Everything else will be removed. We're getting rid of the non-conforming house, and we have two lots that'll be pretty substantially oversized, correct?
Yes, two lots, as you mentioned, two, it's a minor subdivision, two lots. Lot one twenty-eight oh one is the western lot. Point two-three acres meets all the requirements of the Zone R fifty. There are no variances for that lot. And the second lot to the east, one twenty-eight oh two, point three-one acres, the second lot there. And again, point three-one acres, both fifty-foot of frontage, both, no variances for either of the lots, all conforming and well exceed the five thousand square foot in the R fifty zone as well.
Right, so you've looked at the environmental commission report. That's satisfactory, right? We've looked at the farmers advisory. They have no comment. You've looked at the county, the county has given us an exemption as well?
Yes, they have.
On January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five. I believe that's in the board file.
That's correct.
And then I don't think there were any other comments from any of the county's departments. So we're fully conforming in your view. Can the, I forget whether it's a variance or a waiver for the sidewalks, but obviously we'll abide by it if the board wants us to put it in, so that's the case, really. It's that simple.
Do you have plans for the new homes that are proposed to go in there, or?
Yes, we do. The second-
Just, just out of curiosity.
We do. The second drawing from Crest Engineering is called the grading panel. If you could put that up, please?
Oh, there we go.
Thank you. So this is the same plan, of course, as the subdivision showing the same lots. You see the house that will be taken down, the existing home there. The structures in the back will be taken down. The gazebo will be taken down. And this essentially is just a concept plan to give you an idea of what and how it would be graded. The existing topography of the site runs from the back of the property to Freewood Street at about two percent, so a nice gentle slope there. You see that there's a proposed house. It's thirty by fifty on the east side lot, one twenty-eight oh two. That will also conform to all of the setbacks and lot coverage and purpose coverages, so no variances are anticipated. When we do the plot plan for that, and of course, we'll do plot plans for both of these, since we're going to be taking down the existing home as well. One home is presented on this concept, but there'll be two, two homes, one on each lot.
So the existing home, is that being renovated?
Going to be removed.
Just removed altogether? And then rebuilt, a new one rebuilt in place of it? The same layout, basically?
Um, not the-
Necessary, okay.
The same layout as the lot to the right side of the drawing as we're looking at it.
It'll be rebuilt to be compliant.
Yes, it'll be conforming. We'll submit to the building department.
And then both, and then both driveways will be paved?
I mean, yes, I would say that we can do that. There'd be no reason not to do that. I'm sure the applicant would want to do that.
We talked about, there's a driveway that's non-conforming. We can eliminate that. That was one of the variances, so we would put a driveway in a conform place. You'll pave the driveway, right? We'll agree to pave the driveway.
Also, I have storm management, which obviously not there now, so that'll be in the form of a dry well for each of, each of the houses.
And well, is that water well there, or septic?
There is city water.
City water and sewer, okay.
And sewer.
Okay, got it.
And sewer. Right now, there's a septic field, but that'll be taken out.
Right, okay.
There is a well now servicing the house. They might keep that for irrigation. I don't know if they have to get rid of it, but it will be served by city water.
They're going to tie in.
Tie into the-
They're going to tie into the sewer.
Tie into the public and the street, okay.
Is there any wetlands in the woods to the west of the property that, that cause any non-conformities? I'm assuming our environmental commission didn't pick up on it, but could you put that on the record if there is some?
Yes, there are wetlands. Past this triangular vacant lot here, there's a, there's a six-foot fence and at a very large lot to the left of that or to the west of that, and there's some wetlands on that lot, but I did have my environmental engineer go out there yesterday. He walked the property. I have a letter from him directly that indicates that there's no wetlands within a hundred fifty feet. The buffer, of course, worst case would be a hundred fifty feet, the wetlands, freshwater wetlands, so we're beyond that, and we can submit that letter if you'd like as well.
So I guess the question is, is curbs? Does the DPW want, want curbs?
That area?
Yeah.
Cost of re-surface on the street and tens of thousands of dollars for single homes.
Unless there was a-
No, I'm okay with-
And I did talk to Jen earlier, but I want to let, let our engineer kind of, you know, go for it.
Yeah, so I definitely agree with, I have no issues with a waiver for sidewalks or curbing in this area of town. I do have a few other minor questions for the applicant's engineer, just to confirm. So will the subdivision be recorded by Dieter Platt?
It'll be by Platt.
Okay.
Yeah.
Another one that I have is, so there's existing fencing along the frontage. Will that also be removed with the redevelopment?
Yes, the fencing will be removed.
And then the last thing, all utilities, I think there were, will all utilities be underground? No above-ground utilities?
The applicant is, is in, in contact with JCPN L to do that. If they allow that, then they will do that. Otherwise, they'll have to get an easement for the aerial that runs across the one lot, as you mentioned in your letter.
Put in a poll.
So I do believe if it is an above-ground utility, there will be another design waiver relief required for the above-ground utility. I'm not sure if that's something that should be considered at this time, but it probably should be flushed out with the minor subdivision approval. My thought would be, as a condition of potential approval, to require all the underground service. And forever, for whatever reason, if JCPN L requires an above-ground, then it could potentially be an amendment to the approval. But yeah, that, that is one item that would require relief if you need to have an above-ground.
We agree with that, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I had.
Anybody else? No. Okay, any other questions? Open it up to the public. I don't see anybody here, but.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So I know it was a discussion about the sidewalks and curbs, but is there any hardship of why you don't want it?
When you look at sidewalk in an area where there is none, if there's a reason for continuity, for example, sidewalk two or three hundred feet down, there's a school bus stop there, there's a walking community. This is somewhat rural area. There is no sidewalk at all. It's a dead-end street, so for those-
There's no developments on the other side of the property at all, correct?
Nothing on the other side. All the way down to Smith Street, there's no sidewalk. When you get to Smith Street for drainage and such, there are some returns, just return a curb, just around the curves, and that's pretty much it. So I would say in this case, it's a good candidate for, for no sidewalk. It would stick out sort of oddly if you put it out.
So my only concern is, if we were to approve it today, and let's say in a couple months, another development comes up, I don't want, if there's going to be new construction, it should have sidewalks. It's just going to be it. I don't care that this area doesn't have, so I can see right now there's two homes for sale. Two homes for sale that can be, definitely be bulldozed, and new house can be put in. So we need to show that if new construction's coming in, new sidewalk and curb should be placed.
We will abide by the board's decision, but we'd request that waiver for the reasons we stated, so the board will just have to tell us what direction it wants to go.
You're, you're new. I don't want to step on your toes, because I don't necessarily disagree with you, but in this particular instance, it's at the end of the street, yes, and there's no sidewalks in this neighborhood, and there probably will never be sidewalks in this neighborhood. So putting sidewalks in these a hundred feet here just adds burden to the town, because, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, once the developer puts the sidewalks in, it is now the town's responsibility to maintain them. So we would be, we'd be strapping the taxpayers with a need to maintain a sidewalk when we're not going to be able to extend them. But there are, there are opportunities that we definitely want sidewalks, even if it's, if it's the start of it, so that, so that as we, as things do change or houses come down, and we can have opportunities to connect those sidewalks, we definitely want those. This one, I'm not sure, at the end of the road. If it's at the beginning of the road, maybe we'd have an argument, but not at the end.
Yeah, if there's a bus stop and, you know, there's another subdivision, there's two or three houses, and then it's close to the corner, then we're going to, I think, we're going to talk about it different, Mr. Beattie. You know, we see this all the time.
Yes, I just that-
In this particular case, because of where it's at, at the end, it's not touching anything.
You're entitled to your opinion.
Yeah, that's great. I'm going to disagree with you.
Just that, I just don't know, I, I just now just Googled like what free, where Freewood is. So for me, like, I've, I'm not going to lie, like, I never ventured in that part of town. So, and also in my neighborhood, there's no sidewalks.
Yep.
So I'm just used to, but yeah, you don't look like Freewood acres, so it's, um, but no harm.
We should start putting sidewalks where they're needed.
Especially corners, especially corners. If this was on a corner, then Mr. Jack, you know, he wouldn't even ask for a week. If this is on a corner, you know, he would have to order it.
Concern was if new houses come in, like, what's going to be the precedence for that neighborhood?
The thing is, too, with respect to what you had said about, you know, if you have further development. So you look at the size of the lots, right, when you're talking about applying what the logic you're talking about. If you have lots that are large parcels that are going to be subdivided, potential subdivisions, two, three, four lots maybe, you could, you can envision a sidewalk making sense there. I looked at the street. There are seven lots on the other side, all of which are small lots except for one large lot. I has a castle-type home with a, with a pool. It's a kind of estate kind of lot, not looking like it would be subdivided. So you could see those small lots. There would be no further development. If that's true, then there's no point in considering a sidewalk for the condition.
Argument safety. Let's say a developer came in, bought all those houses from their property to the corner, and come back and they want to put up twenty houses in front of zoning. There's sidewalk going in.
You'd have to meet-
That's a no-brainer.
Yeah, you'd have to meet the zoning.
Yeah, I would say that has to be zoning too, but if that was the case, then we're putting sidewalk.
I didn't mean to stir the bees. That's Mr. Greenfield. I apologize. What else, what else would you like to?
That's the only question. I just, it was more like a statement, but I just wanted to make sure.
The ordinance is the ordinance, but, you know.
Really appreciate that.
Mr. Greenfield's been working for the township for twenty-five years, so he knows, you know, it'd be his responsibility if it, you know, yeah. So, just adding that in there.
All right.
Down the road, yeah, sure, absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so I just want to jump in with one last question for the applicant's engineer. Do you have any issues with complying with all the technical comments in our review letter dated February twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five?
No, I looked at all of your comments in the letter dated February twenty-seventh, and we're fine with all of those technical comments.
Okay, great. That's all I had.
Okay. Now we can go to the public. Don't hear anybody? Close to the public. Thank you. All right, so we'll entertain a motion to waive the sidewalks.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the application with the waiver of the sidewalks.
So Brian Tannenhouse?
Second.
And the condition of the underground utilities as well?
Yes, utilities, yes.
Oh, you forgot about that, yeah.
Which we could submit by letter to amend if we can't get them.
Okay.
Mr. Bado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Bouba?
Yes.
Councilman Adele?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
And Mr. McNicholas? Application approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have the need for a very short executive session. I was contacted by opposing counsel in a current pending lawsuit involving the board. I just want to bring you up to speed on my conversation.
Does that need to be an executive session?
Yes.
And only, and only-
It is because it's, and it's active litigation and it's an attorney-client.
Is it regards to Victory Road?
The case is a company called Avronaham Weinman versus the planning board. There was, that's the case?
No, it's not.
That's the one where they were taking the arterial streets.
They wanted to acquire one of the paper streets, but they still have undersized lots.
Okay, so who voted on that up here?
I was here.
Well, whoever's here tonight can participate in closed session. That's okay. We're not going to make, I'm not going to ask you to make any, oh, just as there. You guys, can you close the door on your way out, please? Thank you.